Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Commission meeting. Welcome everybody on Election Day and I hope everybody got out and cast ballots today. It's a wonderful time in Lawrence and Douglas County, I know, and there's a lot of folks that are running and spent a lot of time and effort in making sure that they've got their message spread. So, I hope everybody got out and voted, and you still have two hours. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are to be considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Item number 10, which was a special use permit for 12th and Haskell Recycle Center, has been deferred until September, yeah, until April 28, 2015. So, anyone who's here for that item, please understand that will be back on the agenda on April 28. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that a member of the Commission would like to have removed for separate consideration?
Item 7, please.
Item 7. Any other items that a member of the Commission would like to have removed? Any other items? I would like item number 2 for vote on the claims. Is there any item on the Consent Agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for separate consideration? Okay. Hearing none, then with the exceptions of item number 2, the claims, item number 7, which is the special event permit for the Kansas Food Truck Festival on the west side of the 800 block of Pennsylvania Street, and item number 15, which is to approve as many as signs of community interest for Shirley Signs to place signs in the right-of-way Sixth Street and George Williams Way for Wednesday, April 10, 2015, to Monday, April 20. So, with those three items, I would entertain a motion for approval. Do we need, we don't need to take an action on the special use permit, though?
No, we do not.
It's automatically done. So, items number 2, 7, and 15, the exception of those three items, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Move.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item is item number 2, which are the claims. The first is to approve claims to 506 vendors, the amount of $2,326,631.29. Entertain a motion for approval.
Move. Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Riordan. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. We have claims to two vendors at Rock Chalk Park-related items in the amount of $9,195.93. Entertain a motion.
Move. Second.
Motion made in second for approval, Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Dever. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Passes 4-1. Mayor Amixon, dissension. David, we have an item or a manual check total to a man, one, if we have to do that one separately also?
If you didn't include it in your first one, yes you did, sir.
Okay. Was that included in the first one or separate deal? Okay. Entertain a motion to one vendor, the amount of $640.38.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Riordan, seconded by Vice Mayor Farmer. All in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. The final is payroll in the amount of $2,69,808.97.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Riordan, seconded by Vice Mayor Farmer. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Item number 7, Vice Mayor is asked to have it pulled, approve a special event permit for the Kansas Food Truck Festival on vacant property on the west side, 800 block of Pennsylvania Street, on Saturday, May 2, 2015, submitted by the Snyder Gallery LLC.
So, we're a beneficiary just for it, and since I work there, I'm going to recuse myself.
Please. Okay. Questions or comments?
No.
Public comment on this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of item number 7, the special use permit.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Riordan. All in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Next item is item number 15, to approve as signs of community interest, a request from Shirley Signs to place signs in the right-of-way, again, the Sixth Street and George Williams Way, from Wednesday, April 10 to Monday, April 20, for the Kansas Relays. Bob, you had a question?
Just when you look at, pardon me, when you look at the diagram they sent you from the sign company, the, where's the computer, it froze up, from the Scherl Sign Company, is it?
Yes.
Those little red dots are hard to see, but they're, looks like they're in the site triangle, and that's a pretty good-sized sign. So, it looked to me like you're going to have a lot of traffic out there for the relays, and if we needed to look at that, I just wanted to make sure we were okay with it.
Commissioner, thank you for pointing that out. These are the similar signs that were used last year. So, what we're going to do is we're going to make sure to work with them that they will not be placed in the site triangle. I think that's a good comment. So, let's make sure that they're not in any way obstructing the view. Make sure that that's done appropriately.
Okay. That's all I got. Any questions on that item?
Because there'll be lots and lots of traffic out at Rock Chalk Park. Oh, well, people love it.
I know. Okay. Any public comment on this item? Okay. Entertain a motion for approval of the signs of community interest.
Move. Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Shum, and seconded by Commissioner Riordan. All in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Onto the regular agenda. Oh, I deferred that item. I didn't tell you, did I? I told him yesterday I was going to defer the city manager's report.
Oh, really?
Yeah, just for friends. Sorry.
As if it didn't happen?
I was just going to blow on through it. And the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Commission. We've got a letter that I'd like to read with your permission. Tonight, April 7, the Town Council of Castle Rock, Colorado, which meets twice a month, is scheduled to consider an employment agreement under which I will begin services town manager on June 1, 2015. I'll be providing notice and resigning my position as city manager of Lawrence prior to that date. Serving the citizens of this community for nearly a quarter of a century has been the privilege of a lifetime. In 1980, 35 years ago, in August, I drove up to Lawrence from Wichita to attend University of Kansas. In November of 1990, I began my work in this building. Over the years, I can certainly point to a number of projects and programs in which I take pride. However, most importantly, it's not the projects and the programs, but the people and relationships that have and will mean the most to me. There's never a good time to leave. My desire to break ground on future businesses at Adventure Park, drive the completed South Lawrence Traffic Way, and continue to work with our excellent staff on numerous other projects and assignments, all of these and more certainly pull to keep me here. However, this opportunity for professional and personal reasons is the right position at the right time. Closer to some family, as Sarah and I began life as empty nesters, and the unique challenges of a new community provide the pull to go west. I leave confident that Lawrence is in very sound shape, and its best days are definitely ahead of it. Between now and the end of May, you will have my best efforts to ensure a smooth transition and continued focus on City Commission priorities. There will be a few opportunities to celebrate with colleagues and friends. I think we have scheduled a reception on May 11. Most importantly, I will also have the opportunity to express my appreciation for the support my family and I have enjoyed during our time here. I certainly express my appreciation to this City Commission for your support, and I look back proudly at the considerable improvements which we have made to the community we love. I also want to publicly thank my wife, Sarah, and her daughters, Emily, Catherine, and Laura, for their support and love. It would only be appropriate to conclude my remarks with a quote. I do love quotes. It's from a wiser man than any of us, Abraham Lincoln. "I like to see a man proud of the place in which he lives. I like to see a man live so that his place will be proud of him. With best wishes for Lawrence, I remain sincere leaders." David Corless. Thank you for letting me read the letter, Mayor and Commissioners. We'll look forward to a number of opportunities to say goodbye in the coming weeks, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening. Thank you.
David. David, it's an amazing, you know, somebody that had the opportunity to hire you and truly make a decision that I think was one of the best decisions that I've made in Lawrence, Kansas. As I look back and I see your fingerprints all over things, you have a quote about fingerprints being on things and always like that, but, you know, really, you've made Lawrence, Kansas a much better place, something that we're all very proud of. We'll go through a process of hiring a new city manager, but in no case is it ever going to be one that we're replacing you, because I don't think we can do that. To you, I thank you for making me look smarter than I ever was. Sarah, it's going to be great living by your folks. And I know one thing, I always got a place to stay when I get there.
Sure.
You got a tough job, kiddo. You got to take care of these two.
Yes.
But we appreciate the work that the, not only Dave, you as city manager, but the Corless family has done in Lawrence, Kansas. It's an incredible place because of you all.
Thank you all. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Bob.
Well, I've had the opportunity to serve with three different city managers, and Dave was an intern or beginning his career with the city last time I served, 25 years ago. And I just can't tell you what a magnificent, talented person he is and how much he gets done. And for us, it's a real loss; for Castle Rock, it's a huge, huge gain. Understand why the move is taking place, and I know I've had conversations with you about that. And for you, it's a good move at this time, but for Lawrence, we're going to have to work really, really hard to find the talent they're going to lose with this transfer. So, anyway, I've always been amazed at the professionalism that you've exhibited. I'm amazed at the quality of our employees. That's a reflection of the manager over them, how they encourage them and how they incentivize them, and just the ability to recruit the right kind of people. So, that's the mark of an excellent city manager, somebody who has 800-plus employees, they're all pulling in the right direction at the right time, and providing a wonderful work product for our citizens. As I said before, I have received, the last four years, I've received maybe one or two citizens' complaints on service. Maybe not that, I don't know. That is so unusual for a city that is very active and a city that is served by so many city employees and the different services we provide. So, my conclusion is, you've been a great city manager. I know you're going to continue to be a great city manager, and we're going to miss you. Congratulations.
Well, I've only been here two years, but I've benefited by this relationship. I've counted on this relationship, and it depends on the future, whether as a private citizen or as a city commissioner. I will judge future city managers in your shadow, and that's a hard one to follow.
I don't have much to say that hasn't been said, but, you know, serving eight years, I think you learned a lot as being a leader during most of that time, and I learned a lot from you, and the city is a far better place because of you and your family. Thank you.
Got some big shoes to fill with yours, not just literally. You know, I've had the privilege of probably annoying the hell out of you for the last two years, and for that, I apologize. Hopefully, there's nobody like me in Castle Rock, but I certainly know there's nobody like you there, and they're going to be incredibly blessed to have you and your family in that community and the vision that you're going to bring to their downtown and to their community and helping to, you know, inform the commissioners on possibilities, you know. You've said this a lot here, that you don't really say no to us very often, you find ways to get to yes, and that's why there's so many cool things going on in this community. And that's what I'm amiss the most about having you here, and that's what I know that Castle Rock is going to gain in having you there, is you'll find ways to accomplish some really cool stuff and put them on the map, just like you have Lawrence. And, you know, when you get famous and start doing that in Colorado and jump out of the shadow of liberal Lawrence and conservative Kansas and put them on the map, just send us a postcard.
You all have been very kind. When we have the party, you all don't need to say all of these things again. So, very much appreciate it, and we'll keep working hard here the next six, seven weeks. And the best news in all of this is that you've got great staff, that we won't miss a beat, and I'm very excited about that, and very excited about Lawrence's future. I just, as we've been thinking about this move and driving around town and seeing stuff, we're just constantly enthused about the direction that this community's headed. So, thank you all for your wonderful comments. Again, when we have the party, we'll just all say thank you and hug and do all of that and have good reminiscences. So, thank you.
Okay. Then we're on to the regular agenda. We have one item tonight, and it's to conduct a bond sale, to review bids received and approve the issuance and delivery of $90,680,000 Water and Sewage System Improvement Revenue Bonds Series 2015 Bonds to the best bidder, and consider declaring an emergency, excuse me, and adopting on first and second reading ordinance number 9102, authorizing and providing for the issuance of Water and Sewage Bonds Series 2015, and consider adopting resolution number 21, or, I'm sorry, 7111, prescribing the forms and details and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of Water and Sewage System Improvement Revenue Bonds Series 2015. Right?
Yeah. Thank you. Pretty exciting stuff here. We had an open competitive bid this morning for utility revenue bonds in the amount of $90,680,000. I'll speak to that amount in just a second. As of 10:59, we had zero bids. Just to make sure that it was very, make us a little, started sweating. As of like 20 seconds before the bid closed, we had six bids. So, there was a lot of going on in the market. I think the other underwriters were trying to see who was bidding and putting their mark in there. We received six bids, which is a really good reaction. Of the six bids, one of the bids included a syndicate of 28 banks, and most of those are local, regional-type banks. So, there was a lot of interest, a lot of going on, making sure you get a good Kansas AA2-rated debt. And the interest rates we received as a result of that really shows that. We went, original estimates from Springstead were 3.5% was our estimate several weeks ago, and as you can see, there was a memo that passed around earlier today, the lowest bid was from William Blair &amp; Company for a true interest rate of 3.18%. So, this is an excellent rate, 40 basis points under our original estimates. Part of the bid came in as what they call a premium, and so they gave us a little bit more money than what we needed so they could market their bonds at a higher interest rate, basically for us to pay it back. And so, what we do with that money is we actually lower the amount of bonds we're going to issue to keep the true interest cost the same. So, instead of issuing $90,680,000, we're asking the Commission to approve $89,900,000. So, a little bit less, again, making up that difference in that interest rate that the bidders proposed to us. Part of this process is we went to Moody's for a rating, to have them to rate these bonds. They came back and affirmed the AA rating that we've had for the last couple of years. In their rationale, I'll just read this, "The AA2 rating reflects the system's stability, which is provided in part by its largest customer, the University of Kansas. Solid financial operations and a history of annual rate increases that supports the ongoing capital improvements plan." In conversations with the analyst after the rating came out, she did really talk about the fact that we have a strong management, a history since 2004, that we have a very solid CIP plan for looking down the road for growth, and that we've had this annual review of our rates and adjusted rates as needed throughout this process. And so, they really spoke quite a bit about having that structured CIP and following the plan and thereby affirming our AA2. Tonight's action is to review the bids. I believe that you had those on there, and again, the lowest bid was 3.8, or 3.18, and to authorize the bonds by considering declaring emergency and adopting ordinance 9102, authorizing and providing for the issuance of the Water and Sewer System Bonds, and then also considering adopting the resolution that prescribes the forms and details of the bonds. So, happy to answer any questions?
David.
Commissioners, I just want to make sure you understand that this debt is backed solely by the revenue that you all generate by adopting the rate ordinances and that the ratepayers pay with their utility bills for water and wastewater. It's not backed by our general obligation for property taxes. That's why the interest rate is not as good as we would get for GEO bonds, which is what you've more frequently seen. And secondly, just wanted, just for your information, it's not directly related to your action, it's indirectly related in that we also took bids this afternoon to spend this money that we are going to get for the Walker-Roosevelt Wastewater Treatment Plan. We had two bidders. We believe that they're going to, that we're going to be able to recommend the low bidder. We're still doing a lot of analysis on that because there are a number of alternates that we have to review so that we can continue to get that within our rate plan, but we feel confident that we're going to be able to do that and be able to use these proceeds that we will get through this issuance to further that project. That'll be something that the Commission will consider probably here towards the end of the month on April 28. But it's not directly related to this, but it's, it is, in the sense that you're getting this debt, you want to spend it on the project.
Okay. Bob?
So, the bonds were sold at about 32 basis points below the Springstead estimate? Is that right?
Yes. Yeah.
What does that amount to in dollars over the life of these issues?
That's a great question. A really great finance director would have had that just immediately at his.
Sorry.
But you hired me, and I'm going to actually do some real quick cipher in here.
And then, as you're figuring that out, does that allow us to include more of the alternatives, alternates that are more costly because we've saved some money on the finance?
Well, let me answer that question, too. So, since in the back of my head, I'm still doing that. We have, the process, we've basically come to terms with the bank on the amount of the bond issued and the amount of the projects that we have authorized. We did have some premium in there, another couple million dollars that we can use on project, but my biggest interest was making sure that the debt service on this bond issue was right under what we have in the long-term CIP plan or the rate model that we have. What that does, though, it does free up to add things in our CIP. Now, whether or not we move it up into any alternatives as part of the Walker-Roosevelt Plan, I think that's certainly possible. The Walker-Roosevelt Plan has been authorized for more money than we've issued. I don't remember the exact dollar figure for the Walker-Roosevelt Plan that's been authorized for, but that is something that could be discussed.
I think we'll be looking at that, but we, you know, our primary goal is to get the plant built and get it under the rate plan that we've told the public that we're going to use. So, those are going to be our guiding stars, and if we're able to save money on this, we may want to keep it as a contingency as we start on that project. We may advise you otherwise what we're going to have to do in regards to making sure that that happens. So, we're having to cut portions of the project in order to get it under the rate plan. So, this may allow us to do some more, but we'll be giving you that recommendation later. This is good news, it's just a very large project in which our goal is to get that built so that we can continue to grow and meet the environmental requirements, but then also keep it under that rate plan that we've told the public that we're going to follow.
Also, Bond Councils did some analysis over there real quick as I was babbling on, and the rate differential is about a million and a half savings. To answer your earlier question.
Other questions?
Over 25 years. Right?
It's a 25-year bond, yes.
So, then, the amount that's listed in the ordinance is not to exceed $90 million. So, that covers everything that we need to do, right?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, the actual bond size issuance is $89,900,000.
Okay. Got it. Any other questions, Brian? Okay. Public comment. We got some extremely good rates, thank you. Thanks for all your work there, Brian. Dave, thank you for all the work that was put together on this, all of our utilities, folks, and making sure that we are able to get the plant built, issue the debt, and as Davis said three times in about a five-minute period, being able to meet the, our numbers on costs of the delivery of the service. So, that's where we need to be. So, the rate structure is in place. Okay. So, we have, as far as I can tell, we have conducted a bond sale. I would declare that an emergency, that this is an emergency and that we adopt on first and second reading, and we approve ordinance number 9102, authorizing, providing for the issuance of Water and Sewage Bonds Series 2015, and adopt resolution number 7111, prescribing the forms and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of Water Sewer System Improvement Revenue Bonds Series 2015. Would entertain that motion with the emergency.
So moved.
So. Motion made in second for adoption and approval, or adoption on both, the ordinance and the resolution, made by Commissioner Riordan, seconded by Commissioner Shum. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you all very much.
$90 million here, $90 million there.
Next item is general public comment. Is there any general public comment this evening? Feature agenda items.
Mayor and Commissioners, pursuant to our tradition, we will be doing not anything particularly major on Consent Agenda next week, and then we'll have the swearing-in of the new commission and mayoral elections, vice mayor elections, and then a break, and then probably some training from the city attorney on the Open Meetings Act, and then some calendaring discussion about how we want to start setting up study sessions. about how we want to start setting up state sessions and other things as we begin orientation, begin talking about priorities, and then also begin our budget. So that's the plan for next Tuesday, and then we'll be busy with a lot of the items that we've, one item that we deferred this evening, and then the wastewater treatment plant bids and a lot of other things as we move through.
Okay. Questions? Okay. Commission items. Okay? Calendar. We've got a lot of Ninth Street corridor workshops coming up over the next two weeks, three weeks. So I know kind of where I'm going to be for a while. Okay. No other calendar items? Gentlemen, it's been a privilege.
Indeed.
It has been a privilege. Okay. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second?
Motion made in second to adjourn, made by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you all.